Yeah, I mean, last time we played, the day of the game, it was huge traffic. We had gotten there a couple of weeks before, so we were like, hey, no problem. She had my sister lives in Raleigh, so they just came over, we had Christmas there and stuff, so. This time, it's a little different, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We have city council.
You're the new guy, you're the new guy right there, that's it.
And I've never seen an accident this past time.
It doesn't seem that bad coming home.
For the first, for the first, like, four months that city council that year, we had them remove the computer screens every time. Because I can't see over them.
Yes, and I just started seeing my husband.
And I went along with him and his mom and uncle's dad didn't go, but anyway, I remember her standing up and booing at the bar.
Okay, are we ready? Is it six thirty?
Yep.
Okay.
Call the meeting, Morgantown Planning Commission order, does anyone want me to read the pre-meeting announcements? Didn't think so. First thing on the agenda is the election of officers.
Mr. President, I nominate the current slate of officers and ask kindly that they agree to serve another term.
Second, I get it. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Do that too fast.
Sorry, Tim and I are.
Don't say that. Okay, any other nominations?
Will we close the nominations and appoint back a commission?
God, that was fast.
Yeah, everyone seconded except for us.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Another term.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is general public comments for any matters not on the agenda. Does anyone have any comments for any matter that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, then we'll move on to, there's no one, the approval of the Minnesota November ninth meeting.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes.
There was an order, when the minutes were provided, there was an order in which some of the cases that evening were moved around. So that adjustment we made, also Ms. Seab provided an email to us that there were some corrections needing to be made to the votes, and correct names getting to where they needed to be, so those have been noted already.
Okay.
Move to approve as amended?
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item is, there's no unfinished business, new business, RZ twenty-three dash zero six, Mohammed Abdul Tarb, Tarb Ishi, fourteen thirty-three Dorsey Avenue, and I apologize if I screwed anybody's name on it.
Thank you, sir. Just housekeeping, you have a green folder in front of you that's regarding case number S twenty-three, that's the development of significant impact, and then the orange folder is regarding the proposed ordinance for other businesses regarding section thirteen thirty-one oh six. So we'll be getting to those documents here shortly.
Okay.
Also, you have provided a copy of the PowerPoint I'm gonna go through for more just general images for the public to see, but I will be following this to give the overall presentation of the staff report.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, we take a look, here's the, if you look to the screen, you can see where the property here is located at Lucky Lane and Dorsey Avenue. The picture on the left shows the subject site to be rezoned, and then the picture on the right shows the current zoning designation, and you notice there's, it's kind of in and out incorporated, unincorporated in that particular area. The particular lot here in question, parcel twelve, is currently zoned R one A, and the proposal is to zone it to a B two classification.
And the salmon colored, can you go back to, is salmon colored, or what's the classification for those parcels?
Residential.
Said, the salmon colored, the red, the red, there. Yeah, these two.
Yeah, this is B two, this is B one.
Thank you.
Yep.
And what is the old Atomic Grill Bakery building, what is its zoning?
Out of town.
It is unincorporated.
Out of town.
So, it is located right here, and currently along Dorsey Avenue, there are at least one other business establishment across the street from the old county administration building.
Okay.
If you look here is the subject site, this is a picture looking southeast from Dorsey at the building. This picture on the right-hand side is looking north on Dorsey Avenue. You can see the bakery that you just mentioned there on the right, and then over here, there's a small, I think it's an insurance company practice, which is in the unincorporated portion of the county there. This is a picture of the proposed rezoning map showing the B two classification here that already exists, and in your packet, there was some discussion about how that's evolved over time. Initially, that area was slated to be B one, applications came in in the early two thousands to resound it to B two, and those were approved with landscape buffers provided. Looking at the comprehensive plan update that was just approved by council in December, so again, thank you all for all your work on that document, but now we have a new guiding document for us to be looking at. The future land use map identified this particular area here, I know it's hard to see, but it's identified in red, with the red circle, as corridor mixed use, and I won't re-go ahead and read the whole description, but you can see the development typologies that are listed in your packet. And staff also looked at the type of land use or land management recommendations that would be fulfilled with the rezoning of this particular piece of property.
Does this property fall into the purple area or the orange area there? It looks to me like it would be the orange area, no?
Yeah, so that's really hard to. So this, obviously, is green bag, this is Lucky Lane, this is what comes on the backside. And this is, if you're kind of gonna look right here, this is where the church building would be located, and then a couple of the residences that are back behind where the buffer is that goes up to the school, the school there.
Did that answer your question?
It's hard to say. And that will conclude staff's report. Put it back to this.
Okay, any questions for the planner? Okay, is there any member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this petition?
One note, the applicant is here.
Oh, sorry, you wanna speak to it? As soon as you can.
I just wanna make one comment, so the.
First, you have to introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm Abdul Tarb Ishi, I'm one of the first call applicant. And, so basically, this is a, it was put as a residential R one, and the building is, is clearly cannot like be, be, be used as a residential, residential property, so their request is just to, you know, attach it to the remaining V two business. That's my comments.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, now, since I jumped in, any member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in opposition?
Okay, staff report, staff recommendation, please.
The zoning map amendment requests should be evaluated on their land use merits alone, development intentions are extraneous, and the commission should consider the requests and merits as a land use decision. In conducting such an analysis, the commission should determine if the B two service business district is the appropriate zoning classification for the premises, weighing all possible future development and land use scenarios as permitted in the planning and zoning code. After review, staff finds the proposed zoning map amendment to be consistent with the city's twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan update with respect to the land management plan and goals set forth in the planning documents. Note, if the existing structure were demolished and/or developed in the future, said development would be subject to site plan review and the development standards associated with the B two district, as well as the development standards outlined in chapter nine of the city's planning and zoning code. That concludes staff recommendations.
Okay, any discussion?
Mr. President, given the, particularly given the road network improvements that I believe are imminent, might be the right, right word for that. Allowing this parcel to continue to be classified as R one will render it obsolete. There's just no, you know, I think that the highest and best use of this parcel is B two, and I, therefore, I support the application.
Any other discussion?
Just one, one question, is Lot sixty-seven, is that a church building?
Yes, across the street, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I had some, I don't know, I guess, concern about the corridor mixed use classification. This isn't actually along Green Bag Road, which I would consider the corridor, and we can talk about what the state will or will not, may or may not do with the proposed traffic circle there. And some of the classifications that were given under corridor mixed use, like on our page twenty-one, number five, allow for organic growth of commercial uses that people need close to where they live. To me, that's more conducive to an R three or a B one than a B two, and I was looking at some of the, I highlighted the land uses. There are some that I just don't, that are allowed in B two that would not be permitted in B one that, to me, wouldn't make sense there for like a hospital, a motel, a hotel, things like that in that area don't make sense to me. So, I didn't necessarily agree with Commissioner Stranko in, in thinking that B two was the most, made the most sense at this point, maybe if the traffic circle were already done and this corridor looked different, but we know how working with the DOT can be, I'll, we'll see it, when we see it, we'll see. So, I was, I did not necessarily think that B two was appropriate.
As I'm looking, and I understand your point, but as I'm looking at it, some of the, the size of the parcel there, and what's beside it that's already developed, it's not like they can obtain all those parcels along that road and do something with it that wouldn't necessarily fit the area. The parcel's small enough where it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be a small footprint and a small, sort of like neighborhood business, even though it isn't B two. And while things would be permitted there that may or may not fit, the lot size isn't gonna permit it. Because what I'm looking at, and you've already got the dollar store, the whatever, the kitchen and tile place beside it, that clearly you're not going to be able to assemble a, a large block of land and put something in there that really doesn't fit. That was my only thing.
Fair point.
But I agree that it doesn't necessarily fit B two, some of the, some of the uses, but I was kind of looking at it pragmatically about.
But, but, Mr. President, the question, the question isn't whether B two is the perfect zoning, the question is whether B two's better than R one. That's what's in front of us. There's a request to rezone from R one to B two.
So, yeah.
That's what the application is.
But yes and no, I mean, is it better than R one? Yes, but is it, but is it, is it the right zoning classification for where it is?
That's not in front of us.
Correct, but what we can say is, yeah, we don't agree that B two is correct and deny it as is, or, because as we've done in the past, we can say we don't agree with B two, why don't you come back to us with B one? We've done that in the past.
As we did very recently with the apartment building on the embourse.
I do recall that, yeah.
I mean, on the other hand, the adjacent parcels are all B two, it's in the same kind of.
Right.
High of land, so do we really wanna create a, something that's, I guess, spot zoning or something that's totally different than.
Right, that's my other concern, is if you stick a B one or something else in there in the middle of nothing that it connects with, it's kind of an issue too.
And I get, I get counselor's cynicism perhaps, it's too strong a word. Doubt that the DOH is gonna deliver that project, but I do think the project is, is funded and ready, it's going to happen soon. So, now we're talking about the impact of the traffic flow on this, and again, I think R one would render this parcel obsolete. Useless, in other words.
I agree with that.
Mr. President, if I may, I would find it interesting and include a little bit about some of the history of how this parcel came into the city when it was annexed, and it was initially annexed as B one. It's almost a, you know, before development happened out that time, more like a hamlet type, right? Because if you look at across the street, there's B one also that the portions is in the city, but there is no neighborhood around it. There's, I mean, there would totally be something that would be more auto-oriented as opposed to pedestrian use. Not that looking at the long term, but still, the, yeah.
Well, and that Mountain View School is not going anywhere.
Right.
Chair, ready for a motion?
Yes. If there's no other discussion. Okay, go ahead.
I move that we approve the application, approve the application, send it with the recommendation the city council to pass.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed?
Okay, next item on the agenda is S twenty-three dash zero one three AST Morgantown Properties, thirteen South High Street.
And then there are always some updates that I'll refer to in your green folder here. We'll go ahead, and as you can see, here's the subject property located at the intersection of Prairie and South High Street. AST Morgantown Properties recently purchased the property from the Mon County School District, and since the, the school district previously used this three-story building for administrative office space until the central office was moved to Earl Cole Road. Since the proposed non-residential use of the facility is greater than ten thousand square feet, the applicant is seeking approval for a type three development of significant impact site plan. The picture on the left-hand side shows the current zoning designation in the B four district, and then the subsequent, this yellow shaded area is the R one A zoning district, which is single-family residential.
So, could you tell us, just as an aside, to make sure we're all straight, what is the impact of development of significant impact on our regulatory prerogative? I mean, are we regulating to a particular standard, or what is the burden of proof here, in other words?
So, what triggers that is how big the development is, and whether you're either constructing and altering land, which in the case, the applicant is not doing, but they are establishing a new use. And so that's what triggers, so like when we looked at the old Aldies on Don Knotts Boulevard, where it was converted from the church to a supermarket, there was a development of significant impact because the land use was changing, and therefore triggered it because of the size of it.
And in these DSI cases, we use our subjective evaluation, right? There is no objective criteria that we're measuring against here, is that correct?
Looking, yes, I mean, for instance, because this is already a built-out site, there's no requirements that they're gonna have to bring to parking up to considerations, but one of the things that staff looked at, and that's discussed in the staff report in the technical review meeting, is the fact that, you know, do they have sufficient parking for the new use? That was paramount, and as you saw in the packet, they do have it based on their proposed numbers for the.
I just wanna make sure, Mr. President, we're all clear on what the standard is here, what we're regulating to, and I think it is a subjective evaluation of the propriety of the development at this location.
Right, and additional information can be asked and required to make that decision, but staff has discussed that as well in the report.
And the propriety would be the impact on the neighborhood, essentially, is what we're talking about here. Okay, thank you.
The next slide here, here you can see a picture of the building, so the picture on the left is looking into the parking area for the proposed charter school, and then if you can look to the right, that's looking north on South High Street, across the bridge into downtown, and Prairie Street is coming down from the right-hand side of your screen. The applicant met with staff from the city agencies on December fifth to discuss the scope of the project and address any questions. Two issues discussed at the meeting included adequate parking and managing traffic-related issues pertaining to the drop-off and pickup times at the public charter school. As a result, the applicant provided additional information, which is included in your packet, a site plan regarding the stacking of vehicles in the parking lot for loading and unloading purposes. The applicant has also said that the school day would start no earlier than eight fifty-five, nine AM, and end the day by around three PM. a.m., and end the day by around 3:00 p.m. to mitigate traffic concerns with the arrival and dismissal times of Morgantown High School. And I'd just like to commend the applicant, Mr. Terabishi, him and his team have been very responsive to everything that we have requested and have went, and as you can see in your green folder, and we can discuss that in a minute, has done a lot of work to try to address and alleviate some of the concerns that staff had regarding this project. In terms of analysis, since the property was recently vacated and no new construction is proposed, staff evaluated the new school based on the minimum off-street parking standards. Based on the school's desire to make classes available to no more than 100 students, kindergarten through sixth grade, the applicant would need to provide at least 17 off-street parking spaces for the new use. The requirement, along with the minimum number of accessible spaces required per Table 13650601, regarding parking spaces accessible to the disabled, per West Virginia State Code, are also met. The only other concern that was referenced in the technical review dealt with the potential traffic generation hours and operation. The city engineer had looked at this issue more, also consulted with West Virginia Division of Highways. As was noted in your packet, there was concern with the DOH, and they are also going to require what's called an MMM 109, basic access permit for the new use of the property. But in talking to staff, and based on Mr. Terabishi and his team's analysis and what information they've been able to provide, staff is comfortable with what's being requested and what the plans are, which we can...
Let me just insert an editorial for clarity. The DOH participates in this because that's a state highway running in front of the building.
Correct, yes, sir. Thank you for making that clarification.
Prairie is also a state road.
Is it? That's lucky us.
That's why it's like, sorry.
Easy.
Something most people don't know, Prairie is state.
And if you can look, this is the site plan that was recently provided, showing how, where there would be dedicated parking for employees, as well as the traffic circulation pattern that would soon be set up by cones to access the property and to get into the site and out of the site. The applicant is also working with the adjacent property owners to make sure they have the proper agreements in place and additional parking they need to help mitigate the concerns of drop-off and pickup times, as well as the anticipation of having to submit that request to the DOH for that permit. If you may, the applicant did go out and drive through the parking lot and provided a video to our office, so if you may, I'm gonna pull that up and just show that real quick. And so that's just one example of how somebody would come in with cones in place and direction from staff of the school to be able to get students in and out, in addition to them being able to maybe park additional places in the vicinity.
That leaves me at least two questions.
At least.
At least, and I'm a lawyer. At least. First, is there an entrance and exit for people through the back of the building where I would assume the drop-off is going to be, or do they have to walk around in front? That's first.
Unless the applicant is here and he'll be able to address that, but obviously there is no access on the prairie because of the change in grades.
Right. But what I'm talking about is, from the drop-off in the back, are the students going to have to walk up and walk down the sidewalk around in front of the building? And that leads me to another question, we'll get to you in a minute. And I'll ask you this, this is, keep these in mind, which leads me to another question, see, I said at least two, is if there is no entrance and exit to the back of the building and they're gonna have to walk down the sidewalk to the front of the building that's on South High, then does that not make it easier for people just to stop on South High and drop kids off, which we are all prone to do when we're running late? Just how people are. That's the first set of questions, there we go.
Sure.
Second set of questions is, I understand there's gonna be work with Mr. Colbank and the engineering company, architecture company that's next door, but what I saw from the video is, as you turn around, if they're starting at nine o'clock, the school's starting at nine o'clock, and there are people already parked at the building beside it, effectively is a larger SUV going to be able to turn around without backing up? Has the city looked at that? As we do sometimes with, can you get a fire truck in there? Has the city looked at, is this really feasible and effective, or are we going to just kind of make a three-point turn and then back everything up onto South High as people are coming in? That's my next set of questions.
Okay, so to the second point, no, the city has not had a fire truck or anything go in there. And the, what I'm trying to say, in terms of purview, the city actually does not have purview, the city fire marshal does not have purviews, the state fire marshal.
I'm not talking about the fire marshal doing it, I'm talking about the city engineer seeing, is this really, what they're proposing as far as the turnaround and even using the adjacent lot, the adjacent properties lot, is this really effective? Can it be done?
In real time.
In real time and effectively, without backing everything up? And is that something we need to think about? Because once this backup starts, that's gonna affect Prairie, that's gonna affect South High. Granted, it's after work time when people are going to work, except for me, because I come in late, go down that road, but still, is it effective?
I think there's other, and I'll defer to the applicant, but I think there's other mitigation measures. So there's proposed parking for obviously the employees right along where those red spots are. Again, when you showed the video, it's kind of narrow the way they came in and out of that space. If those spaces were made available for a larger area to be able to turn and maneuver into the spot, other than what was shown in the video, it could potentially accommodate it.
And I'm not talking about beside the red where the cars are parked, I'm talking about the yellow exit as it encroaches upon the engineering company that's next to it, which I assume they're getting agreements from.
Right.
That's a parking area for that engineering company. If there's, if somebody's got an SUV parked beside the engineering company, can you make that turn without making a three-point turn?
That analysis has not been done, to my knowledge.
Is this something that should be done to determine the traffic flow?
Can I add a sub-question to your second set of questions?
Absolutely.
Where there's cars, particularly when it's kids involved, where there's cars, there's pedestrians. So as the city engineer talked about, pedestrian safety in this case, is there any kind of study or opinion regarding pedestrian safety?
No, the city engineer did consult DOH, and neither DOH nor the city engineers requesting a traffic study related to this particular project.
Which would include pedestrian safety?
Yes, correct, right.
Well, I'd kind of like to see one.
Because that's...
I think it's important, don't you?
I do, and I'll tell you what, I come up this road every day coming home from work, and already coming up Prairie, as you're coming from University Avenue up Prairie, you have to almost pull out on the South High to see to your right what's coming down South High, which includes pedestrians.
Right.
And not every day, but at six o'clock at night, I will see pedestrians there. At noon, as I'm going home for lunch, I see pedestrians there, and a lot of times I have to stop for them. You can't see very well at that intersection, so that's difficult.
Mr. President, I just think the staff report is incomplete in that regard. We need to know whether the children are gonna be safe with what we know is densely trafficked area, certainly sometimes a day, and when Pete's driving through in particular.
Yeah, because I'm not paying attention to anything.
I would also note in your green file that there was a preliminary traffic impact study done by the applicant, the results of that are included, but...
And I get that, but that's, thank you for saying that, because that's what I was gonna say.
That's not an objective traffic study.
Ditto.
So those are my questions to start out, and did you have more?
Yeah, we wrecked your presentation, I apologize for something, but it's a hot panel, we're obviously prepared and concerned about these things, and they need to be addressed.
But I think, and the applicant can speak to this, I mean, they're in conversations with the owner of the funeral home and some other property on Prairie Street to be able to get parking spaces for their facility to facilitate safe drop-off.
What a nightmare, kid darting across South High Street to get to his or her parents in the funeral home parking lot. I mean, that's what I'm thinking about, and so there may be a way to mitigate that, I'm not an expert.
Sure.
But we need to know what the risk, measure the risk...
Sure.
And then propose mitigation, because...
That's the first thing, and the second thing, generally with the funeral home, you're gonna have two, three days' notice for a funeral, it's like, oh, you can't park here today. And then...
It's tied up to Mr. Jenkins, surely.
Then we're in the, okay, I show up, I don't have the funeral scheduled, now where am I gonna park to get my kid?
Yeah, that's right.
I was confused with these diagrams based on the required parking spaces, it's supposed to have 17. This is, I mean, that's what our things say, right? That's correct? Seven classrooms, 10 employees, they have to have 17 parking spaces. I mean, maybe when there's no pickup, drop-off, they might have 17 parking spaces, but right here, it shows them driving through most of their parking spaces, so it only has 10. How did this make it past staff to begin with?
For, because on paper, it provides the number of required off-street parking spaces, but the applicant is proposing to utilize some of those spaces to facilitate turnaround in the parking lot.
Then they're not parking spaces.
Then they're not parking spaces.
They're not full-time parking spaces.
Full-time parking spaces.
So what if, so they're gonna have 10 employees, so those red spots right there will be taken up. What if at pickup time, five parents need to go inside the building to speak to a teacher? Where are those five parents gonna park? Because right now, those extra parking spaces are being driven through.
Right, I would have to defer to the applicant to address those, since that was the site plan that was prepared, but I imagine there would be some staff out there directing this, it just wouldn't be a set of cones set up, and there would be, I mean, it would be left to people's devices.
It would be sketchy.
Yeah.
I just...
Let me see if there's any, no.
I'll wait.
Sorry.
I'll wait.
I don't understand if you're driving through them, the parking spaces.
Yeah.
They're not parking spaces if you're driving.
Yeah, it's a little tone-deaf application of a rule. You don't count the spaces, but not the use of the space.
Uh huh.
Did you have more?
I do not.
Why not? Okay.
Scared and quiet.
Any other comments from, or questions from the commission?
I would just like to say, I think it's a great use, you know, I'm happy to see bringing some life to this space, and so I understand the concerns, and would love to learn how we can talk through, just as I know you all want to, how we can make the flow of traffic and parking work more, but it would be great to activate this building again, so be happy to hear what the applicant has in mind, and if we need to try to work through something, you know, over the next month possibly.
Sure. Any other comments?
Just one question, and I guess it's more of a code thing, or like for a school, on each floor, do you, can you do just one point of egress, ingress? I mean, I see one set of stairs, right?
I would, yeah, our team will not be looking at that because we don't have purview over schools, public schools. So the review will be looked at by the fire.
Well, I was gonna say, is it a public school or is it private?
It's a private school.
It's a public charter school. And the applicant can address that question, I had to research it a couple of times myself to understand, but they can address that question.
So the answer is, what you're saying is our building code doesn't apply?
Because if it's county, no, it wouldn't.
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, the state fire marshal has purview over the life safety of this facility, not the city's fire marshal office. But from a zoning perspective, because it's not a publicly owned piece of land, but it's privately owned, that's where the city does have purview over the zoning part, and that's what we look strictly at.
Okay. Any other discussion?
One other thing, just, I know this has been an active discussion about the fire department that's a couple of blocks away from here? Is it staying on, it might stay there, it might not, right?
Well, they purchased land somewhere else, didn't you? Didn't you all do that, or getting ready to?
They're in the process.
But that's just down, basically down the bottom of Prairie.
And I guess the question is, is this their main egress? When they come out, can they go down Prairie, or do they come all the way across?
I have not seen the site plans, but I believe it will be primarily accessed for the vehicles will be University Avenue.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, if we do get into this traffic issue, and a bunch of cars are sitting there waiting to pick up kids, and a fire truck's coming to, you know, we need to worry about that.
Right now, they generally go down South High.
That's what I was thinking, because they can't turn down Prairie, yeah. So just another concern that we need to make sure that the turnaround is adequate.
Because I have seen them go down South High to where the old post office, new courthouse is, and turn there.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's the way they'll have to, if they're going, but if it changes, it'll be down on Becher's anyway, whenever.
Yeah. Do you have something else?
Our new information that was given to us, that just for the record, was sent very, very late last night, and I am seeing for the first time right now, has morning prediction, 82 vehicle trips, afternoon prediction, 60 vehicle trips, with the tightness of that parking lot, we are going to have major backup on the South High Street while people are trying to get kids in and out of vehicles, right?
Right, and imagine, you see how narrow that entrance, you're gonna have cars going in and out at the same time, if that happens.
Well, and the email that was sent to us, is kind of here, that is now in our, in our green packet, says proactive, number two, proactive traffic management. This seems to lead us to believe that they'll be using staggered pickup and drop-off times, access from two different streets, High Street and Prairie Street. That doesn't show any type of, the actual traffic plan doesn't show any type of access from Prairie.
You can't pull in the parking lot from Prairie, because you have to walk down steps.
So this is just flat-out wrong when they're saying there's access from two different streets.
Unless you stop on Prairie and let kids off to walk down the stairs.
We haven't heard from the applicant or any member of the public yet.
No, we have not, because we're still talking, the applicant's presentation is next. Is everyone done making comments? So we get the applicant.
I'm sure I got more, but I'll hold it.
Okay, you aren't gonna have the applicant?
Good evening, gentlemen. So I stand here before you, I'm one of the property owners, and also I serve on the Wisdom Academy Board, which you see a lot of the, most of the people in attendance here are basically, are part of the community that is supporting this, so we have probably about between 40 and 50 people in the room. So I just want to point out that this would be the first charter school within city limits. West Virginia Academy is right out of city limits, so that's something I think we should look into, and I really appreciate the comment from Commissioner C. about like, that we need to revive this part of town. We don't want Morgantown to have like old decaying buildings that's been, you know, abused by, like the house, my personal house that I purchased in Evansdale, Evansdale itself was abandoned and was used by drug addicts, I had to tear it down, and Mr. Peters is probably familiar with the neighborhood. Anyways, so what I'm trying to say also, one of the reasons we have a lot of like things in the green folder versus the submitted application, because our application submitted in October, and we, due to misfortune in the notification, we got canceled for the December meeting, and then we received the staff report on Tuesday evening at 5:00 p.m. So that's, so I was basically trying to catch up on everything, because I do have, yes, I have like modified plans, and I actually have Mr. Bench here as available in the audience, he's one of the Alpha Engineering partners and co-owners, and we actually sat just, was it yesterday? Just yesterday, it was just yesterday that we sat, and then I, I'll leave him to comment on that, because we were discussing like alternatives, because this, as, if you want to bring out the, you know, we had multiple discussions, because this is basically all private land, this is not, you know, not the city. So any rules regarding the city, the fire, it does not, the fire should not... the fire should not be accessed, the fire truck should not be accessing here, this is all, this is all private property. And we, we discussed that we're gonna, we're gonna find a suitable way that we'd, that we'd find the pickup, whether to do the drop off like this way, because the, the, the current leaseholder of the, of the bottom part of this building is actually Mon, the Mon County Board of Education, and they're on month-to-month basis, to my understanding, so this is something that we're looking to, to leasing in the future, so. I tried to stay within the boundaries of the, of the lot when I submitted the application, because I didn't want it to be reviewed, and this is one of the things that addressed the parking, because parking space is not gonna be this, I reached out also to Mr. Jenkins, because the, when I first met him, he was telling me that, because this, this building had more than seventy employees, they have more than seventy offices, and some of them are doubled, so probably you have like a hundred people. We're asking, we're, we're planning to be a hundred students, so we're not really that difference in terms of occupancy. And actually, students are bought it probably better than, than employees, because if every employee has their own car, students have, they don't drive, they're K to six. So, so we're gonna, we're working on reaching an agreement, we're just trying to, basically, we're gonna have access to, with, with, once I reach an agreement with them, this, this parking lot. And I'm not sure if we have like access to Google, there is another parking lot that's owned by, by Alpha Engineering that currently not using, that we're interested in also subleasing, which is, yep, which is over here. Actually, there's, there's actually two lots here, one owned by the Mon County Board of Education, and we were a successor, successful bidder on it, but the unfortunately, Mon County Board of Education, they can vote yes or no about selling or not selling us the lot, so they decided for the occasional football games that they have, that they wanna keep the lot. Which I found unfortunate, because it was kinda like misadvertisement, like here, you can't sell me your building and give me half of the parking lot, but that's unfortunate, but they, they did express also interest, but during the holiday, they were not answering, not answering my, my request to, to see if we can sublease this outside of football games, which is, which happened on Friday evening, so not even be interfering with, with their operation if they wanted to, but they have, they have otherwise no, no use of this parking lot. So there's two, this big parcel here that we're interested in, in basically leasing, so. We, as I said, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak a lot like, you know, putting words in Mr. Bench, because as I said, like, but, but you're seeing things that are submitted to the application from back then, and we have a lot of changes, I have some maps actually, that I, that I have plans for the, for the additional, but I don't wanna put on confusion with the original application, since it got pushed, pushed for so long. So this concern, so this, and I wanna go back to the, to the access areas. Regarding the access, so this property here has one, two, three entrances, and there's also here, there's an alley that leads this way directly to this entrance. This goes to your, actually, there's four accesses, one, two, three, four, one, one leading on this street, and one leading on this street. So, so people on the second floor have straight access outside, so that's why the stair would only be serving, like, it would, you would only have the traffic of, you know, to, to address, Mr. Peters concerned, you know, for people wanna evacuate from the, from the third floor, because the second floor, they can, they can access here and there, and for the first floor, they have already two accesses, so the stairs was, and the state marshal did, did visit, did make a visit, and was, and was, and would not, I have his official report, did not have any concern regarding, regarding, you know, egress from, from fire hazards, so. One other thing I wanna also mention in my packet, so we did, we were notified late about the, that they, that we need to get like, you know, permission from the state, since this is a state route, and we did submit the application, but I, I was, I did put another letter just requesting that, with the staff recommendation of approval, you know, but with, with the, with the condition of obtaining the permit, I just request from the board that, since it's kinda like a different agenda item, and it's a different body of approval, that, that, that we should make them separate. What I'm trying to say, like, if you guys would take the recommendation of approving, take that condition for that, for that state route, because we, we did apply for it, we're not like, we're, we're not saying it's not required, but we're just saying like, it would be a, not necessarily a, like the, the city decision dependent on it. Contingency, it would be contingent on it, because it is, it is in process, but we don't wanna delay further. The reason why I'm pushing a little bit time on the timeline, because we're planning to open in August. And this is not like, you know, any other business, you can just push a month or two, doesn't affect you, it affects you for a whole year. And we don't wanna hurt our, our interest and this audience that we have, that we have in front of us. And I would, would like to invite every one of them to speak, otherwise we'll be here till, till midnight, so I'm gonna ask whoever wants to speak after me. Mr. Branch, from.
Oh, hang on a second.
Yes.
First of all, we, we, you don't get to invite people to speak, we, that's something I get to do.
Yes, absolutely.
Since they like to be president. That's firstly, and we'll hear from as many as we can without making repetitive, but I'm just gonna tell you my concerns. I will, I think something needs to be done with this building. I think a charter school is a very good idea for this building. I'm concerned that all the i's are not dotted, and the t's are not crossed, as far as parking, traffic, et cetera. That's my real big concern. That's, that's where I am, okay?
I, I agree completely, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's fine, and, and while, you know, everybody wants to speak and was gonna tell me what a great idea this is, I don't disagree with that. I, I, what I'm seeing right now is you're just a little bit premature, cause you, you say you're working on agreements for parking, you're working on agreements for traffic. Normally, yeah, if those fall through, you're, everybody's stuck. So normally, what we wanna see is those agreements in place when you come here, and, and I'm just setting that out there right now.
If you, if you don't want me interrupting, I received the staff report on Tuesday.
Oh, and I, I get that, I understand.
I pulled my application on October.
Yeah, and I understand.
And, and the city, with all, with all respect, they, we need to have, you know, invest the infrastructure, I mean, I'm, I'm not expecting Mr. Eager by himself to able to, to manage all the applications, I wish, I wish we had more resources, that, and we place an application, we get a timely response.
But whatever the timeline is, doesn't change our responsibility.
I understand.
And we have a responsibility here, by law, to review this application and act on it in the best interests of the city, and of the neighborhood, and of the people that are going to use this facility. So I'm sorry for the, the timeline doesn't work for you, but we'll act as quickly as we can, but we need all the information. So has there been any talk about traffic calming on South High Street to protect the entrance to this school? Has there been any searches about, research about pedestrian safety? I, I don't see it, and, and I'm talking about third-party of, of reports, with all due respect. So I, I'm with the president on this, I think this is premature, and I regret the, the time crunch that you're under, but it, again, doesn't change our responsibility.
And I know the Board of Education, as soon as school gets out in December, you're never gonna get a return phone call from them. Cause they're all on vacation, they're all somewhere else, and I know that as far as your parking, et cetera. And I would like to hear from the guy hiding behind the pillar, about agreements, potential agreements, and I wanna hear that. But what I wanna hear is, here's what we have, not here's what we're thinking about, and here's what we're trying to do. Because if, you know, and when you were talking about parking, because I go up that street every day, and I see that lot beside Jenkins, and I see cars, used to see cars parked in it all the time, and now I don't. And that's a lot I thought about, and then when you said Mon County Board of Education owns it, but they're not gonna use it, except for in football games. I, I get that, and you, you can probably do some kinda lease with them, but we don't have that, and, and I understand that's, you're trying. So tho, those are my concerns, I think Commissioner Stranko's concerns. But again, I, I, I don't think anybody up here thinks what you have is a bad idea, I think everybody up here thinks it's a good idea.
You're all about it.
Uh, we just gotta get there. And I understand your timeline, and get in August, I, I get that, and I think where you are is you can get these things in place. If you, you could probably, since you own the building, start doing the refurbishment that you need inside the building, while you're getting the, the parking in, in place, cause it sounds to me like, like you're, you're gonna get there, it's just not quite, quite ready, but I think, I think there's things you can do to get you open by August, even if we have to put this off for a month till you say, here's my, here's my leases, here's my agreements, that's all I'm saying.
If, if I present, like, as I said, like my proposal, and Mr. Branch is here, would, would hopefully give you some reassurance, would at least be like an approval with stipulations of getting these in place, and then I can provide, keep on working with Mr. Mr. Eager, and, and get the, and get these approvals in place. I'm not saying like, 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 I have like a realistic idea, I'm not saying like, you know, the Board of Education have moved from that area, there's, the, the people who are parked currently in the lots are people who are just, you know, living across the street or something, and, and using the parking, so we're, we're gonna enforce, you know, since for the lesser, we're gonna, we're gonna enforce our part, you know.
And I get that, so I, I guess my question is, what if the Board of Education says, no, I don't wanna, I, we've decided not to leave that to you?
She, the, the lawyer of the Board of Education did express interest that she, she would like to.
And I get that, but what if, what if the board votes no, just like they voted not to sell it to you, that's first, second, what if Mr. Jenkins says, you know, I really can't let you park here?
Do we have, do you have the letter from Mr. Jenkins? He's just send, he sent it to me today.
Okay.
So that's what I mean, there's, there, there are parts in the, that we need to.
But I don't see the response, I'm sorry, I don't see the response.
It's the last page in your, in your.
Yeah, but it's from here. It says, good afternoon, Mr. Jenkins.
No, no, there's, there's one.
This is the response, okay.
And there is an official letter too, I'm not sure if that reached out or not.
I did not get that.
Not, not, okay.
But it's not really.
I got something too, Mr. Jenkins, I don't say anything from Mr. Jenkins.
Correct.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a reply, and also there's a, there's a letter from him too.
But we don't have that. We do, that's something we don't have.
I'd like to visit with Mr. Jenkins, I mean, I think he's an important part of this, and you all hear what he has to say.
Or we see a written agreement.
Yeah, or we see a written agreement.
So that, that's where we are, and, and I get, I get the timeline, I really do. And we're not trying to be difficult, we're trying to do our jobs. You're trying to do yours, we're trying to do ours.
So Morgantown could get another, I mean, get a charter school and not be outside of the city limit.
Nobody says there's anything wrong with that, everybody's all for that.
We, we'd like to revive our, our town.
Nothing wrong with that. We can't just say, well, that's great, so we'll just not do what we're supposed to do, to let you do something. We have a job, we have responsibilities, we have to do them.
Yes, and, and I'm gonna refer also to Mr. Stranko's concern with, with Dr. Javid, he was, who's gonna be operating this, I, I didn't wanna just give you all the answers myself, so he, he would, he would address the, the concern for, for the safety of the pedestrians.
I'm happy to hear whoever wants to talk, but I'll say again, I'll say again, it's important for us to get objective, third-party evaluation, because that's what we rely on when we make our decisions.
Okay.
Can I add?
Sure.
Sorry, we've been waiting to hear from you, how about you?
My name is Chuck Branch, I'm an owner of Alpha Associates Architects Engineers, and a member of Prairie Avenue Properties, we own the building that Alpha occupies to the east of this building. We've shared the, we've shared that parking lot with the Mon County Board of Education for the more than forty years that we've been there. And we're happy to see someone else take over and do something with it. I'm not gonna stand there and tell you there are issues with everything we're talking about, everything you brought up is exactly what we, we talked about. The first time I met Mr. Terabishi was yesterday, when he came into our office and to discuss the plans. We're not against this in any way, we would love to see this happen, we're very eager to work with him to make sure it does happen. The other parking lot we're talking about down at Prairie Avenue Properties is actually owned half by the Board of Education, and half by Alpha Prairie Avenue Properties, which is Alpha Associates. So we own half of that lot, of which we are not using, so we are prepared to enter some sort of agreement with him to, again, these agreements are in place, because I met with him yesterday, and I can't tell you that it's a definite guarantee, but we have every intention of working with him to, to get, help him get through this process. I'm a civil engineer, and personally, I've dealt with schools, I know the drop-off issues, I worked on the Mountaineer Middle School drop-off redesign that was recently done. I'm sure you all know what a nightmare Mountaineer Middle is.
That's a big improvement, by the way.
Thank you. And, and other schools around the state. So we know the issues, and, and trust me, I know this is gonna be an issue with drop-off and pickups. I park, and you'll see my truck in those Google Earth images, I park on the upper side of that parking lot. So I understand the issue, so we wanna work with, with this group, make sure that they can make this happen, and if there's a way to make it happen, we'll do that, we're prepared to do that. And I speak on behalf of my partnership at Alpha Associates, and with my partners at Prairie Avenue Properties, so.
And, and we understand that, but I think what we have to see is not, hey, we're prepared to work, it's, here's what we have, here's what we've agreed to, because we gotta have that.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, it's just in the interest of time, like I said, we met with him yesterday, we didn't have time to put any agreements together, we're not prepared to do that at this point, but we'd like to do that, and in, in the interest of, of at least being here, I'd, I'd like to show support for his project, so that's why we're here. We'll do what we can to help him out, I'd like to see it happen, and we have every intention of working through some agreements if we need to. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the applicant.
Okay, thank you. You had some questions, right?
Thank you, I had a question for Ricky. So where, what is the status of other reviews from other departments? Because if this would be tabled for a month, what else needs, what else is, he surely can't be at the finish line for all other departments, right? Is anything else still pending, or, you know, still under review, if, you know, within this, if we table for a next month to get some more details about parking, are there other things? Has, has, have you had a conversation with the building department about any upsets that need to happen inside? Do we know, you know, has any of this conversation started, where are you?
So we did have a technical review on December fifth.
Okay, great.
And so that's where we had the, our, our city fire marshal, our building officials, code, everybody was at the table. The two concerns that came out of that, based on the floor plans that were provided for the rehab and remodel, were what we've just been discussing now. And the city engineer did reach out to West Virginia of Highways and consulted with them to see if a traffic impact study would be necessary, and that communication was not likely, given the number of students. So the, it wasn't gonna be requested by the city engineer, and it's unlikely to be requested by the West Virginia of Highways, their primary concern was the, the drop off and pickup.
Totally understand that.
Yep. And do they have to get something from D O T?
Yes, they have to get a permit.
Okay.
Access permit.
Access permit.
Yeah.
I, I'm just confounded that neither our city engineer nor the D O H looked at this in any, any detail.
They, no, they, they looked at it, but in terms of.
So they recommended no traffic calming devices, no pedestrian safety devices, nothing?
The, the comments from the D O H was that they would have to get that permit and address their concerns, once the permit was submitted, and it sounds like that process has started.
The access permit.
Correct.
Okay, so again, we're missing a piece of information.
And if the access permit is denied, then what?
But, but.
Now, I just asked a question, if the access permit is denied, then what?
So in staff's recommendation, in the revision that's in your packet, the applicant has asked for approval without that contingency, that staff initially put in regarding the access from West Virginia D O H, I looked at the city ordinances, and that is correct. I looked at the city ordinances, and that is correct. You can approve a site plan without having the proper approvals from the West Virginia of Highways, provided that building permits, or let's in this case say a certificate of occupancy, are not issued until those agreements are in place.
So what if we say sure, and they do their major refurbishment, and DOT says absolutely not? Then you can't issue a certificate of occupancy and they're out how much money?
I understand that. But that's the provisions in the ordinance.
I think that's better.
It is, but that's up to the applicant if they want to be spending that money.
Yeah, it is, but.
If I may approach the applicant for a minute, just ask a question.
Sure.
For what, giving you a hard time?
Just needed to ask a clarification question, so.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Okay.
Yes. Sure, go ahead. Come to the microphone.
Sorry, before I make the decision, I know like I'm the applicant, but there is like integral part of my application for other members to speak. One of them who provided the traffic, the traffic assessment.
We have procedure for that.
Yeah, I understand, but like, but I'm saying like, can I suggest that we, before we.
So here's what happens.
Yes.
When I ask if everybody had any questions, the next part of it, I'm gonna ask if anybody out there in the audience has, wants to speak in favor and against it. And that's when people can come up and talk and add some things to it. What I'm not gonna let happen is everybody that's in the audience come up and say, it's a great idea, because I want to send my kid there, because that's gonna be repetitive. If they have something they want to add, traffic, this, few people want to talk about it, I'm fine with that.
That's why I'm requesting like two people from the audience.
So what I'm gonna do is open up.
Like they're like considered as part of the applicant.
Oh, as part of the application. If you have another part of the application that wants to talk right now, that's fine, before we get to the public hearing.
That's what I want to say, exactly. That's what I want to clarify. I apologize. I should have said that upfront. Is it okay if I invite Dr. Said, because he's gonna address for the, because I told Mr. Stranko I'm gonna.
The traffic and parking?
The, the, the traffic and the pedestrian safety.
Okay, sure.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I'm Dr. Javid Sayad. Obviously, I'm an educationist. I am the program chair for computer science and information technology at Selve University. So education is extremely important, okay? I understand the role you have to play, which I really appreciate. Obviously, we are as much concerned about the students who are coming there as you are. I don't think that there is anybody sitting in this audience who is going to put their children at risk of anything. Whether it is pedestrian, whether it is road crossing, whatever it is, okay? We obviously have thought about it. For example, the concerns about what is going to happen over there, well, the children are going to be dropped. Obviously, we'll have people who are going to be with the children, who are going to take them from the car and take them into the school. We are going to be acting responsibly to make sure that there is no accident or incident that's going to take place that puts us, responsible people, at a risk. Hey, did you think about it? So as you are trying to do your job of trying to make sure that things are, we are trying to do our job too, from the perspective of education, that we address those things, that we help students to be safe. Their parents feel safe, because nobody's going to send a child to a school if the parents don't feel that the, that the location and the children are going to be safe. Okay? Nobody, and we have to understand that nobody can guarantee safety today. And you are very well aware that all the incidents are happening throughout the United States. The schools have the approval. I'm sure they have done all the studies, but still the accidents take place. So my suggestion to you is let's be realistic about, yes, we are willing to do whatever is needed to be done. There is no question about that, okay? It's the responsibility of the people who are executing and implementing education, that they are the ones who come forward and take care of the students who are in their, who are their responsibility. Because I don't think anybody sitting in the audience, and I know there are a lot of parents sitting over here, that they will ever think of sending their child to the school if they were not safe. Please rest assured that safety is our concern as well. And we will do things to make sure that the students, the teachers, and the visitors, that they are safe when they are in our premises. Whether it has to do with the traffic, whether it has to do that we need volunteers, and I see a lot of volunteers who come to public schools today. Road crossing, why are they there? Same thing, because they are trying to provide safety, okay? So we will take all those steps and all those measures to make sure that the children and the people bringing them in are safe. As far as there is going to be a crowd, we are the ones who are going to take responsibility to make sure that when we invite the parents, we schedule these meetings. My grandson goes to a school too, okay? It's not a big school, it's a small private school, okay? I'm going to tell you right now, I'm amazed, I'm not supposed to allow, I'm not allowed to come out of my car. Their people come, they take the child out of the car, from the car seat, and take them into the school. We have, we are going to implement such procedures too, because we know we have to do that. So my request to you is please, you know, I understand what things that you're concerned about. I'm sure they are very valid, and I appreciate that, okay? But it's an opportunity, okay? So please consider the application. Give us whatever, whatever is needed. We are willing to, you know, I really appreciate the neighbor who came forward, okay? I haven't met him officially myself, okay? I'm, I'm the one who is the chair of the charter school for applying this application, okay? Obviously, we went through a lot in order to put our application together for them too, okay? We had to convince them of these things too, where's the safety? What kind of curriculum are we teaching? What are the teachers that we are going to hire? We have to meet, meet their requirements too. So we have no issue in meeting the requirements that you have. We are not asking you, you know, recently you have a job to do, we appreciate that, okay? But at the same time, I'm also pleased suggesting to look at our application. Let us know at what set, okay, what else needs to be done? Obviously, we'll have agreements that need to be signed within neighbors and so on and so forth, okay? We'll do all that. So please, my, my request is to please consider this application as, as, you know, on the timeline that we have, that we need to do a lot more other work done as well.
Okay. And I understand, and everybody's all about safety. But what's the first thing they teach you when you learn to drive? Watch out for the other guy. You're gonna be responsible for the safety of the people, but you can't control everybody else on that road. That's the first thing. So we need, we need to make sure that it is as safe as possible. While you went through the application with the charter school, they're not looking at the same things we're looking at. I understand it. If you're willing to do what we ask you to do, what we're saying is do it and then come to us and say, this is done, not this will be done, maybe if we can get everybody to sign the agreement. That's, that's where we are.
I understand that. And again, there are a lot of schools, as you know, okay? They have guards, volunteer guards, who come and help children cross the street and so on and so forth, you know?
Right.
And we'll do that.
And that's, that's a state highway that somebody's gonna be blocking.
Well, it could be, because.
It is a state highway, and if somebody's a traffic guard to get kids to cross the street, do you have permission from the state to block the state highway to get kids back and forth across the street? And where is that?
And as we said, that whatever the state requirements are, we are going to, we have already filed the application for it. We'll see what they need, and we will work with them too.
I don't understand, Ricky. Let me ask you the question. That the permit from the DOH covers the entire scope of the use of this property, which includes pedestrian safety, traffic calming.
It's right-of-way access. That's the permit that they said they'd be required.
Right, so it's in and out onto the state highway. The rest of the stuff is not included in that DOH report.
I have not seen the entire document.
Let's just suppose that's the case, even more the case that I think we need more information before we act on this.
With all due respect, we are not just concerned with the safety of those involved with the school. We are also tasked with the impact on the neighborhood and the surrounding areas.
And the through traffic.
I just, I just maybe, let me bring up one safety issue. And I get it, this is in our purview, but since, you know, you're obviously very concerned with the children's safety. So let's paint a scenario. There's two floors of children's classrooms here. You have a floor and a third floor, and let's say there's fifty kids on it, and there's a fire, and it's in the stairwell. How do they get out?
Obviously, this is out with the fire department, that they are going to be, I think they have inspected the building. They have.
I, I get it, but I, you know, as a parent, I'd have that concern. There's not a fire escape or something like that. And as you're thinking about it, this is not something that we would put in our purview, but I'm just giving it to you as a suggestion for you to think about from a safety issue. Because if I was a parent, I'd have a concern with that.
Yes.
So just a suggestion.
I understand that. All these things will be listed in black and white. Procedures will be pasted. We will have drills for the students to make sure that these things are followed.
The other thing you could do is flip it. Put the classrooms on the first and second floor, and you have access. And I know there's public access there too, but.
But we'll see what we can do on third floors or activities we can do. We can work all that out.
It's not part of this review, but I thought I'd just bring it up.
Okay, thank you.
So I could satisfy my own.
Did you have anyone else that wanted to?
Thank you, first of all, for allowing this to go along. I don't know how far you have to the night. I'm gonna try to be brief and, you know, get to a couple of points. First, I'd like to address you as a parent, parent of two children that go to Morgantown.
Can I ask, can you introduce yourself first?
Sure. My name is Mohammed Hafada. I'm, I'm right now speaking as a parent, and then I'll get to the application part. Is that all right? Would that be okay? So as a parent of two children that go to Morgantown High School, Morgantown High School, the recent, the most recent number of students is right around two thousand, eighteen, fifty to two thousand students. I drop off my son and daughter sometimes. Sometimes they take the bus. And at seven ten or seven fifteen, around that time, every day which I'm late, that is a dead stop, and I think most of you are aware of that. That state highway, which is High Street, is a dead stop. And I would like to think, or at least if I'm teaching my son how to drive, I probably want to avoid that place. Because we see disasters happening every single morning, between kids crossing that road, between parents that are irresponsible, driving across Prairie when they shouldn't have, looking one way, not the other. I'd like to think that everybody sitting here is well aware of that situation. And I'm not saying this is good or, you know, in any way. I'm just trying to give context to the whole idea. We have a high school that has two thousand students, and I'm gonna get into the technical part in a minute here, but bear with me. I'm not saying this is right in any way. I'm saying if you just take a video, go from seven to seven thirty or seven to seven twenty at that intersection, watch what happens. As far as traffic violations, it's disastrous. And that's the least I can say. What people have been doing, including myself, and I appreciate people from Alpha allowing us to do that. I see the gentleman's, is it the Highlander, the yellow Highlander is that your truck?
That's our company.
Okay, yeah. So that's pretty much the vehicle. What I do is basically cut it short, instead of going through this intersection that's a madness, coming south on High Street. What I do is I pretty much pull into their parking lot, which is the charter, what now is Charter School Parking Lot, drop off my kid, he takes the stairs and walks to the high school. So that I can save myself a little bit of danger from people doing crazy stuff at that intersection, trying to get to the high school, and also save myself some time so that I can run back to work. And maybe get him some exercise, if you will, okay, so he walks up the stairs. That's what kids think of exercise these days, okay? So with that in mind, and giving context to this, when I sent the study for traffic, and this was not required by the state, we, I took the extra step, knowing professionals, this is a, this is a traffic center in a different state. Wanted to be completely unbiased, because my job is to be unbiased. That's what I teach, that's what I do. I do research. I want it to be as unbiased as possible. This gentleman is, works, has been working in traffic. He's a professor at a university. I'm not gonna disclose the name, but he's a professor at a university and also runs a university transportation center. And what I asked him to do is come with that study. Basically gave him the intersection, gave him the data. All, everything is on Google Maps, right? So he knows the high school, he knows the area, just plug it in. And this comment that, I don't know if you got it or not, that late email was basically his response. There is no bearing whatsoever. I'm reading, I'm quoting here. According to the, the trips generated by the proposed school will not have any impact on the level of service and delay the adjacent two-way stop controlled intersection and so set. Or, these are basically, so pretty much it's within tolerance, as, as you probably know, when you open a new place, you want to make sure that impeding traffic is not there. It goes by class of traffic, the class of traffic will not be impeded. It's period. There's no, there's no question about it with no more details. With that said, I think, and I understand your concerns, as a parent, I will still be bringing my kids to the high school. This is not a high school, it's not in the business of competing with a high school, not for traffic, not for students. But on top of this, I think there might be something that we could help solve and become forward as an application and say, why don't we do a zero, whatever, zero to five, eight to five, from eight thirty to eight forty-five, kind of stagger it. And then our second batch of students will start school at nine. So we can start, you know, kind of stagger the starting time. From grade zero or from grade one to grade five, we can make that a certain time and shift the other time within a half-hour window. And this way, we could kind of divide the traffic, so it's now only fifty students or forty students, or whatever the number is. With parents, we're kind of dividing the load. It's ultimately resource management. It's dividing the load over, stretching it over a period of time. I'm not sure if this is something that we could, you know, I think this is in our hands to implement. We could right now say, and I'd like to think that both, both, all, all the parties here are willing to be flexible with this and say, okay, we're gonna do our entry time for our younger kids at this moment, and then entry time for the older kids at this moment, or this time. And this kind of helps divide the traffic into half. It'll cut it in half. Having the guards, I mean, I lived on the south side of Chicago. I know most of you haven't, or maybe you have heard of it in the news. Morgantown is really safe. Even though that crazy traffic that I mentioned about the high school, it is really, really safe. And I really appreciate you guys, and that's part of why I moved here. I moved my family here, looking for a more safe place, not the south side of Chicago, because it's not safe there. However, still, schools operate in that condition. And how do they operate? They just, you know, have volunteers come up and hope for your kid not to be shot. I know we're not at this, and we'd never want to get there, but at the same time, I think it's like, like Dr. Javid said, it's about really the implementation. Is there enough people that are going to implement? Because we could have our papers look perfect, and then implementation is just really poor. We get an unhappy neighbor, we get another unhappy neighbor, and so on and so forth. And I have to tell you, if I'm a neighbor of this high school, I would be not happy. Just because none of anything, because of the traffic, because of the madness of the traffic. There's kids learning how to drive, their parents gave them cars probably too early they shouldn't be driving, parents that are trying to rush their kids in. It's, it's a mess. And I'd like to think, and I'm not saying we are planning to create a mess, I'm just saying, I'm speaking here from a, from a sort of relative perspective. As a parent, I feel like if I'm dropping my kid in these circumstances, this is far from that. Even with all the obstructions, even with all your concerns, I'm not trying to water down your concerns. I think you have valid concerns. That said, looking at what's on the ground right now and looking at the concerns, I just don't see it. I, as a parent, I don't see it. I see my, I'm much more comfortable driving my younger kid to this school after high school madness. I'm gonna call it high school madness, not March Madness, high school madness. I think that's way more reasonable as a safety from a parent's perspective than I would be comfortable having them or me drive at rush hour. I really appreciate you listening to me. Thank you very much, and I promise I'll be as short and concise. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I'd just say, if, in the future, if you guys are thinking about, you know, staggering times like that, you know, beware that oftentimes parents have kids in multiple grades. It becomes a little difficult to hit two different times. Maybe you can get a good percentage of them to divide up, but it's not gonna be a hundred percent.
Oh, and you know, it's not something that we can regulate. I mean, we can hear the proposal, but three years from now, five years from now, they. decide, and I'm not casting any aspersions, but it's not an ongoing regulation we're doing here. We're looking, this is development, significant impact, we're looking at the impact on the neighborhood as a whole. And that includes the people that are using the building. So, you know, just assuming that we're gonna be able to stagger these traffic flows and make it easier is, I think, not proper.
Yeah, because next year, once this is done, they can say, you know, that's not working for us, and we're all gonna start at 7:30 in the high school.
Our families don't like this, this schedule, and we have no say in that.
Of course.
So I think we need to regulate to the worst case. I mean, I think that's our, that's our task.
Because nothing, you know, and I get that, that part of your process was we're going to change our time so that we don't coordinate basically with the high school. But where, you have somebody in, in high school and maybe somebody has kids in a high school and kids in this school, and it's just a lot easier to take them at the same time or in the same traffic pattern. And then if there's enough of that, then the school could say, yeah, we're changing our time to, to coordinate with the high school. There's nothing we can do at that point. And, and that's, that's not what we're looking at, that's not what we're regulating. What, what we're regulating is, do we have the information to make a, a, a valid judgment on the application that's in front of us today? That's where we are. And I don't think we have the information that we need. I don't think we're there yet. And I, that's, that's just me. And I don't know, I mean.
I agree.
I don't think that it's uncommon, having worked in this field, to, like it or not, but to make an approval and hold Ricky accountable to, for that to come in. An approval with the condition that the, that he be on the hook to handle making sure that all the traffic comments have been addressed. And if it's not, then it's at the applicant's risk financially to move forward with the project. But he is our staff person and, you know, I have great faith in him that he wouldn't let go of it. He wouldn't, he knows our concerns and I trust that he would follow through for that actual permit to come through. That is not an uncommon practice. It may not be our ideal, unfortunately, but, you know, timelines are a lot to, to juggle with. So I, like I say, I understand the concerns too, but I also have faith in our staff to be able to bless this for him to, again, manage if an approval went forward with the contingency, that that be, that Ricky as our staff person watched that. And if it doesn't come through, it doesn't come through.
Well, and they're asking for approval without contingencies right there.
Well, and I, I don't support that.
Well, and I agree with Katie, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cee on, on the principle, and in some cases, that's absolutely appropriate. But here, we're dealing with a, a significant location, an important location in town and, and an important activity that we all want to see succeed. I think that's the, the, the buzz I'm getting from the commission, but, but that doesn't mean that we delegate away our responsibility to Ricky, however well he would handle that delegation, I would be against that.
If I may just clarify, the revised staff report that's in your packet just removes item number three. So the request is still that the written permissions from adjacent property owners and the address, the drop off and pickup times are still addressed and that be submitted for approval would be to staff's, to, to staff's consideration. But the request would not include the West Virginia Division of Highways per the section of ordinance cited.
Well, well, no, the ordinance says we may.
Correct.
We may, not that we must or that we shall, right?
Uh, let me look it up real quick, sorry.
You kindly put it in the packet, I think it's in here somewhere.
It did. It says, let's see, under section 138508D2, approved West Virginian of highways permits and/or agreement if applicable is not required for planning commission site plan review, but shall be required prior to issuance of a building permit. In the event a traffic analysis or traffic impact study is required and the review of the same involves the West Virginia Division of Highways, written electronic correspondence from the Division of Highways documenting its approval of the traffic analysis must be presented to the planning commission by the applicant prior to DSI site plan approval. So again, it says it's not required for planning commission site, but shall be required prior to issuance of a building permit if it's required by the DOH. That's the way it just reads.
Okay.
Can I ask again for clarification, how you reached the parking requirement of 17?
Based on the staff report, if you turn to, it would be page 42 in the packet, based on the standard per 136504, K eight, K through eight grades needs one space per classroom plus one space per employee.
So looking at page 68 and 69 of the packet, I see 14 classroom spaces.
Correct. Yes, it actually should be 24, my apologies.
24 spaces?
Correct.
And we're showing 10.
The applicant, no, the applicant.
Permanent spaces, 10 permanent spaces.
Right, and that, I, I get where the distinction is there, but it, sorry, that was a typo, but that is, they do meet the parking requirement for the number of classrooms that they're gonna have and the number of employees that are proposed at the facility.
Okay, now, now you got.
I don't get it, I don't get it.
So if we went from seven, if we went from 17.
It's one space per classroom.
If we went from one per classroom and permanent employees to make 17 and then we have 14 classrooms and we have 10 permanent employees, that makes 24. I don't, I'm not a math major. I don't get it.
24 parking spaces.
And how many are there?
Uh, there are 24, if you.
Where?
I will pull up the.
There's somewhere, he has that like some red scribbles on something somewhere.
65.
Yes, page 65 in the applicant's application.
But, but you can't have, the employees are going to be there when the kids are dropped off, correct?
Pardon me?
The employees are going to be there when the kids are dropped off. So.
Theoretically.
How could?
I just don't think you can count parking spaces that you're driving through. I just don't think you can count those. I'm not comfortable approving.
My understanding is that the, uh, that would be, whether the, the, the staff would be located off at another location or there'd be other.
But we don't have that now. We don't have those agreements in place.
Right, I, I understand, and that's why.
What we have is, the staff is going to be parking where the cars are driving through and Alpha's going to be parking where the cars are driving through. That's what we have in front of us right now. Which means there's either, one, no parking, or two, no access. It's one or the other right now, what we have in front of us. And neither one fits.
They, they have sufficient parking based on what the ordinance requires. The pickup and drop off utilizing that temporarily for whatever time period that is, and the applicant's mentioned that several times, I believe it was a 20-minute window, something along those lines. For that period of time in the morning, yes, those, some of those spaces will have to be occupied, but for general use of the property, it would, it would be insufficient.
So it's a one-dimensional application of a, of a regulation when there's actually two dimensions, not just the spaces, but the use of the space.
If I'm looking at page 65, I count 22. Someone else count page 65, I count 22.
Yeah, I didn't count 24 either.
20, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22. So they don't have the parking.
There might be one missing there. I don't know, 24.
I'm not the chair, I can't call. We're counting everything.
Okay.
Yes, you approach microphone.
Yeah. So the, as, as Mrs. Stumble said, like, yeah, the, the number of spots would, would reach is the number, and the reason why they're seven, not 14, because it's K, it's, it's K to six, so K 1, 2, 3, 4 to 6, that's seven classrooms. The building, we're putting, we're imposing on ourselves a limit of 100 students, that's why if we were going for 200, we'll use the 14, but we're not using the full, the full potential of the building. And we're imposing that limitation on us. And until we reach an agreement with our neighbor, we can go up with a parking space with a number of classrooms, because we're only gonna have seven operational, because, because think if I have like 14, what I'm doing like, like seven, 14 times 100 divided by 14, I'm not gonna have four students in each classroom.
So, we get that, but that's like we have to have, for example, a restaurant, you have to have, here's your square footage, here's the number of parking places we have to have. The restaurant can't come to us and say, well, we're only gonna let half the people in there at a time.
That's what we're saying.
Because when you build out 14 classrooms and we say, go ahead, nothing's stopping you from that point forward from filling those classrooms. We can't, we, we can't stop you at that point.
Yeah, but the Charter, the Charter School Board will stop us.
Yes. We do this proactively. We do this from the beginning with what you gave us. What you gave us is 14 classrooms. We have to assume they're going to be filled at some point.
That's like, that's for the remodeling, but we said we're gonna only do 100 and the Charter Board are only gonna approve us for 100 students. So there's, that's our ceiling. We can have as many, as, as few as 40. So we might have even like.
Kindergarten reverse rate.
But isn't this a, isn't this a discussion for them to have with the Board of Zoning Appeals? The, they're gonna, they're gonna need a variance in the parking, apparently. Am I right? Is this a BZA issue?
Not the way the staff read it, but I understand what, what.
Well, just assuming for once Pete's right, okay?
The other concern, let me tell you. The other concern in the regulation, it says, so, when it says one parking per classroom, right? The one parking per classroom is when a parent requests a visit, we're not gonna allow visitation during the pickup and drop off time. So that's why we physically have the space, but during, the, during pickup and, and drop off time, the parents are not gonna be allowed to, to come to the, to the building.
What's our ordinance say about parking for K through eight?
He just read it for us. It's one space per classroom plus one space per employee.
Not one space per classroom when parents are visiting? And not one space per occupied classroom?
Correct.
It's one space per classroom?
Correct.
Okay.
And if we go through the recommendation from the, from the committee about, I believe it's number two, that if, if we obtain the agreements, if, if I like, by tomorrow, I sit with Mr. Branch and I come with a, with an agreement, we didn't say that we would, we would like to have that contingency and like you, you guys would approve with a contingency of, of me getting an agreement. This would fix, this would definitely fix the parking, the parking side of things. The parking and the drop off. Because that would have the access to the whole, to the whole lots. The whole like, you know, as you can see, it's a deep lot as you can see here. It's fairly deep. Oh, yeah.
Off-site parking is okay here Ricky, to qualify for the parking requirements?
You could have shared parking facilities. The other issue that.
That's different than off-site parking.
The other issue that we.
That's different than the other lots down the street.
The other issue that, that is, is here is that the property lines here, I don't know how they got to where they are, but they are where they are. Some of these other lots that aren't identified in red are technically partially, I think, with Mr. Teravici's property and partly with the county. The, the portion of the county retained. So if you can just look at those spaces there.
But he doesn't have an agreement for that, he doesn't own that.
Correct. Well, I understand.
Maybe he does, maybe he doesn't. I can't make, I can't make a ruling on what might be. I'm, I have to go by what I'm looking at.
And I didn't, I did not get a copy of the deeds to look at, to, to do that analysis.
So. Danielle asked you if off-site parking was okay for the parking requirements? And you said, your response was, shared parking's fine. But I don't know that you answered the question if.
I believe shared parking facilities. Shared parking facilities.
Okay.
So if, if.
That are off-site, that are on a different parcel.
Yes, we, that's happened before.
The Wharf District is an example, Wharf District is example.
Yes, I'd have, I could pull up the section of code and look if you'd like me, but I, yes.
And does that have to be BZA approved? Or is that a condition from us?
I believe the shared parking, it would be probably a condition of the BZA.
Okay.
But I think with the lim, the parking that's already available on the site and what, and that they're working through, I think there's, there, there could be sufficient parking. But I understand, I understand the commission's concern about how and when that's being utilized. I, I understand that.
There's too many unknowns here for me, there, this, this is incomplete on my part. I'm not comfortable voting for this right now and if I'm forced to vote on it, my vote will be no.
I'm a, I, I think it's fair that we have a clear punch list of what we're, what we're looking for here, so let's do that. Can we take a minute, Mr. President, do that?
Yes.
What we're asking for.
So, here, here's where I am procedurally. What did you say?
I said, we haven't finished the public hearing.
Oh, and we haven't started the public hearing yet.
Those are the applicants.
But, but I guess what, where I am procedurally is, if we're creating a punch list and potentially going to table this, do we need to have the public hearing first? Or do we do that before the public hearing? That's where I am procedurally. If that's, if that's where we're going to say, here's where we, here's what we need to see and we want to see this next month, we're gonna table it, is the public hearing necessary right now? Because I want to give everybody a chance to talk that wants to talk now, next month, whenever. I, I want to do that, but I want to make sure that I'm doing this right.
I, I'd like to, I think it's up to us and I think these people spend the time to come out here, if they want to talk to us tonight, we ought to listen to them today.
Right, and I agree.
Without repetition.
Yes. Because again, I haven't had dinner yet, so. The longer I go, the madder I get.
We still have angry, three more agenda items.
And a workshop.
Yeah, so just think about that, everyone. Okay, does anybody else have any comments or discussion right now? Okay, is there any member of the audience who would like to speak in favor of the petition? And again, what I'm gonna do is, I know there's a lot of people out there and I know that everybody thinks this is a great idea and we do too. I don't need to see 20 people get up and say, this is a great idea, I'm, I'm all for it. If there's a group that wants to have a representative do that, or if you have something different to add, that's great. But if it gets too repetitive, I'm, I'm gonna kind of cut it off a little bit, just, just warning everyone. That being said, is there any member of the audience who would like to speak in favor of the petition? And, and all I ask you to do is, is come up to the microphone, identify yourself and, and you got five minutes.
Do we do name and address?
Yeah, name and address.
Good evening. I did not eat dinner today. My name is Adnan Ogobon, I'm a physician. And, you know, it's a college town. It's educational town. There is schools, we're blessed to have good schools in this town, good educational institute. And traffic is been also an issue in every school. I drop my kids in middle school and high school, same thing. I always nervous till they cross the road and go to school. So, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not gonna technical here, but it's an issue in this town. Even the biggest institution of education in the state, you know, when they have games or have, you know, there's always traffic issue. So, you know, of course, this is, you guys, this is your, your job, but I'm not asking you how to do your job, but just to look at the whole town that wasn't designed maybe for that, as many institutions for education. And this charter school takes the education to a next level, I think. And, you know, most of these audience are physicians or professors or highly educated people. And, and, you know, these type of projects will happen in this type of towns. It will not happen in a small town in Clay County or some, somewhere else. So, we're, we're just asking that you guys be gracious, you know, look at it, you know, laws always have room. You know, they give you guidelines, and, you know, human being, or judges, or, you know, whoever are gonna decide, they decide between these rules. So, so I, I know there's no perfect scenario, but from what I hear, I think volunteers might be helpful, you know, to, to regulate traffic. And whatever suggestions, reasonable suggestions you guys have, I think, you know, the committee will definitely accommodate. Basically, that's it, you know, just asking for some graciousness, you know, how, how the town is being designed, and how, how other schools are functioning. We should have the same share, you know, I know the BU is, is powerful, you know, big. We're not powerful, we're not big, we're small. So, we're asking for just some graciousness from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition?
So my name's Anessa Bog, and I live here in Westover. I'm a parent to my, like, he's turning four, so we're, me and my wife now are starting thinking about where, what school we're gonna put him in, and thinking about his future here. I also am a physician. I worked at Bridgeport. I grew up in Bridgeport, West Virginia. And I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with Bridgeport on Johnson Avenue, whereas there's three schools right beside each other. There's Johnson Elementary, Bridgeport High School, and then Bridgeport Middle School. And those are the three biggest school probably in Harrison County. And I think Johnson Avenue is a lot busier than High Street here, and there's a lot of traffic. Remember going there, like, there's a lot of traffic, and there's a lot of kids crossing over that street. From my childhood, I remember that the traffic across the street, when pedestrians are going across the street, there's little kids with their flags, standing in front of the cars and stop the traffic. I'm talking about three or four, third or fourth graders. I'm not saying that this is gonna happen here, or should happen there, because I have my concern about that too. But having those three schools in a busier street, and bigger schools, where I don't hear any problems with that. This is a very smaller school, and I think the school officials will be able to direct the traffic and ensure the pedestrian's safety. That's all I wanna say, and I hope you guys vote in favor for it, for the future of the kids here, and future of my kids. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition?
Good evening. My name is Wama. I'm a graduate student here. Honestly, this is the first time I've been exposed to all this. I'm just a big supporter of the community and everything. I grew up in Charleston, West Virginia, and came here for college. And honestly, I was just wondering what the problem was with Ms. C's idea of doing it with contingency, of getting all of the things that you guys need from us. Because I completely understand from hearing everything that's been going on, is that you guys are concerned about safety, you guys are concerned about traffic, and you guys are concerned about the city of Morgantown, which is your job. And I was just wondering why the whole, with a contingency thing was an issue for you guys, if you guys could answer that for me?
This is probably common. I mean, somebody can answer if they want, but it's, it's, it's you making a comment, so.
Okay, oh, okay, so this is, I can't ask questions?
You can, but we don't have to answer.
Oh, okay.
Your, your ordinance, you feel were unreasonable?
No, 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 I don't. No, no, I was, I'm like, because as you guys said, you guys have procedures, and I am just simply unfamiliar with those procedures as a student. We're not really exposed to this kind of thing. I was simply wondering what the procedure was on this, like-
I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer.
Sure.
There are some contingencies we've allowed and delegated to staff, which are, we would say, less important.
Yeah.
Not unimportant, but less important. But the issues we're discussing tonight, as you've heard, are very important.
Yes, of course.
And I, at least from my perspective, I don't feel like, I don't feel like a delegation is appropriate. That, that we're responsible for, to the community, for this work.
Um, also another question, I'm so sorry. I just wanna know about the procedural aspects of everything. If you guys do deny or decide to table it, when is the next possible time to get it approved?
Well, I can't speak for my colleagues, but if, if in two weeks, we have everything on the punches, ready to go, I'm happy to attend a special meeting, if that would help. But our regular meetings are monthly.
Okay, thank you. I just had those questions. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Any other member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition?
Good evening. My name Abdullah Kassar. I'm a businessman in Morgantown. I've been in this town for almost four years. I came as a student, graduate student. My question is, or my concern is, if everybody agrees that this project is wonderful, everybody agrees that this is need to happen, and wanted to see succeed, I don't see a problem of giving to contingency with the application. Especially that, these problems that everybody's bringing up, is common in downtown areas. It's not something is unique, or something is being created by this project. So, pink giving contingency is very, I mean, very good move at this time, especially we are tight on time. Because my question, my next explanation is, brother, the, Mr. President mentioned that we can start remodeling or doing the work, even, even we, before we get this application approved. And I guess the city want this happen first, before they give us the building permit to start construction. So this kind of conflict, we cannot do anything with this building, and then we get this done, and then get the building, and that's put us another two or three months, I don't know, behind to start the work, and then it takes time to get the work done. Thank you.
Any other member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition?
I was expecting a no, honestly, because I think I, I came here as a applicant, but now I'm speaking strictly as a parent. I think, so thank you for allowing me to speak again. I think part of the idea behind, I think the idea of safety is really important, and I'm not here to, to, like I said, I sent two of my children to Morgantown High. But I'd like to think of safety as a more holistic thing. And from that perspective, traffic is just part of that safety concern. I'd like to, I don't know how many of you are parents, I don't know if you have kids in high schools. With two thousand kids in a high school, and kudos to everybody working there, it's almost impossible to keep any sort of order. Last year alone, and I'm speaking as a parent strictly, you do not, I believe if, if you all have children, you understand how a child is precious to a parent. My own son could not use the bathroom because they had to take the bathroom doors off because kids were doing drugs and vaping inside the bathrooms. These are facts. You may Google them, please look at them. This is all public record. You can look into it, go, just visit the high school. These are facts. So, that created a, and I'm, I'm not speaking here of, this is very, very personal to us. When you get a call from a kid that is sick because they can't use the bathroom, that is a very stressful call. Why is it stressful? Because we all have jobs. We all are trying to raise kids in such a difficult time. If you look at the smoke shop, I was driving by one of the many smoke shops available to our children. It says literally on there, and I don't know how this is legal, and how did it slip by, "special discount for students." Please, take a closer look at these shops. I think that's a huge safety concern, or whether you wanna call it, I, that's a bigger concern for me than the five minutes that my child will be crossing the street with some guard. I'm not trying to, again, I'm not trying to water that down. That is a risk. But looking as a parent from the holistic point of view, a bigger risk is the eight hours that he's spending in that high school with God knows who giving him what. These are bigger concerns. And to that point, that's the whole idea behind the idea of a charter school. It's a smaller space, more manageable, probably less resources. People sending their kids to these schools are not gonna be people that are risking their child's, you know, education. They're, they might be compromising some of that, but they actually are looking for a bigger, you know, bigger picture. What does that bigger picture look like? Less chances of getting drunk, less chances of being not able to go to the bathroom, less chances of getting addicted on something, less chances of vaping, less, and so on and so forth. I can go on the list. So I'd like to think of safety, take a step back, and please, ask, ask all of you to think about this. Would you be comfortable, aside from the five minutes we're talking about, or ten or half hour, I'm not, again, this is important. But I'd like to focus more on the eight hours, what's happening inside that building for eight hours? What are the chances of having a, a school where students are ten to one ratio, rather than twenty-five to one, or forty to one, or even in gym class where it's two hundred to one? Please don't tell me that this is not concerning. Our kids are growing up in such a difficult time, especially if you have your own kids. You would understand exactly what I'm saying. If you have younger kids, God bless you. Kids come to me, my nine-year-old comes from elementary school, asking me X-rated questions, from nine years old. I'd like to think I could have a closer look if it's a smaller space. It's just happening around us. Social media has opened up the doors, and so on and so forth. So, we are really looking at this as an opportunity for us to have a closer connection, a more community, more tight connection with the school, because no matter how good a principal is, managing two thousand students is just not right. I think we as a society have failed miserably at scaling, and that's why I appreciate all of you. I really, I was not, I was expecting like, three people. I'm gonna be honest, this is my first meeting of such. Having this number of people concerned is really assuring for someone like me that's coming from a bigger place, bigger state. But I ran away from that because it's just mad. And I'd like all of you to please look at this as a baby. We're trying to literally nurture a baby to grow, and let's give it a chance to live. I understand there's concerns. We do the car seats, we do everything, but let's not, let's not ignore the environment that our kids are in, simply because it's not manageable. There is, it's impossible. I sometimes wanna email the principal or the counselor, and I feel bad for them, because I'm not the only parent emailing them. And sometimes I think of visiting the high school and like, saying, man, am I gonna find parking? Is it gonna be enough for that half-hour lunch that I have to run and get a good feel of what's happening, whatever concerns I have, get answers to those? Most of my kids' counselors don't even know their names. They literally come tell me, Baba, we are a number in this space. And with all due respect to human beings, it's impossible. I teach. When I have a hundred students or twenty students that I have to take care of, it's, it's almost impossible not to think of them as numbers. So what I'm requesting from you, and I really appreciate all of you being here, it seems like nobody's absent. Is this right? Is this a full house? As far as the, I see everybody's seat is, I really appreciate you taking-
One vacancy.
One vacancy, okay, that's, that's much better than I think anybody expected. So I really appreciate you guys taking the time and coming, but please look at this as a baby that we're trying to help move forward with whatever safety we, we think is ruled, but please take the big context of safety, because, safety again is in, I know, I know too many kids, and I've moved around, and I've known a lot of people, it's universal, too many kids have become addicts during high school, and even middle school. And this is public information. The middle school in this town has had two pregnant women last year, or the year before. It's public information. So I cannot just look at this as not a safety concern. I would like to think every parent here is concerned about that. Why would an eleven-year-old become pregnant? And I'm not saying here, I'm not trying to bash any school. I think they're doing a fantastic job on the educational side, but it's very difficult to manage that large sum of students. I'm not saying it's gonna be guaranteed in this school that there's no mistakes. There will be mistakes, but I'd like to think these would be much easier to spot, because it's a smaller scale, probably much easier to, to fix, because it's a smaller scale. And that's, I think, we as society have a responsibility to give chances to smaller businesses, smaller, you know, smaller things, so that corporate, huge businesses don't just suck it up, because that one form, we are offering a diff, another, an extra modality of education for people that would like that. There are many parents out there that are not happy that they, their kids can't just pee because, or they have to pee in front of everybody else. The door is taken off of the bathroom. There's a lot of parents that share that concern. And so, I'm hoping that you guys, and I appreciate you really taking, allowing me to speak, to look at this from a wider angle, with all due respect to the regulations and rules, and thank you again for listening to me. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the petition? Okay, anyone in opposition to the petition? Okay.
I guess we can do staff recommendations?
We haven't talked about them enough yet.
Uh, let's see here. After review, staff recommends that the planning commission approve Mr. Teravich's application for a Type III site plan review with the following conditions: one, that the public charter school does not start before nine AM and dismissed before two fifty-five PM, per the comments provided by the applicant, and two, that the applicant plans with and/or seeks written permission from adjacent property owners to utilize their space during drop-off and pickup times. A copy of said agreement or written permission shall be submitted to city staff for review and approval, and recorded for retention purposes. That concludes staff recommendation.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
I, I'd just like to, if, if we could create a punch list of the things that we've talked about. I mean, Pete, you mentioned the parking agreements with Omni, and, Alpha, I'm sorry.
Omni, Alpha, whatever it takes, right?
Oh, gosh. They're all, they're in Fairmont, yeah. Omni's in Fairmont, aren't they, yeah? Parking with Alpha, and, and I'd like to hear from Mr. Jenkins as well, if, if not in person, at least as a parking agreement. I think you mentioned that as well.
Yeah, and, and the Board of Education for the other, your shared parking, the, down on Prairie. Because they made part of that also.
So that's easy enough. The more problematic one is the traffic study pedestrian safety issue that we've been talking about, which is paramount in my mind. You know, if you just plug in an algorithm, I get it. Oh, well, you know, we don't need to do a study here, but we live this street. I think the president, more than any of us, and me too, and we know how that traffic is on the street, and the risks that we're talking about here with a hundred young children circling around this building in some fashion. So, I don't know what to ask for, frankly, a, as far as that study goes. You know, I, I think the traffic commission could add value, but I don't wanna torture the application by waiting for them to weigh in. But, but certainly the, the city engineer and, and public safety would have some perspective here.
I think they should take a look at it. I, I don't think we can direct them to do so, but I certainly think that we can strongly suggest.
Well, at, at the very least, we need to see a DOH permit. Because you suggested that, that this access permit would include ancillary conditions, safety conditions.
I'm not sure what the permit will require.
Yeah, see, I've never seen one like that. I've never seen one with anything but the car count.
Right. I, I don't know the extent of what the application has been submitted, and what the level of review is going to be, but the only concern that was communicated to us through the DOH is the drop-off and pickup times. And as long as the applicant could satisfy, satisfy DOH's concern, they would issue the permit.
But we don't have the permit.
Right. It's in process. But again, that's something that I guess the board can retain. I'm not sure, but according to the way our code reads, the site plan can be approved without having that approval from the DOH, provided before building permits are issued for the project, that that happened. And I'm not sure how that fits with-
Building permits or certificates of occupancy?
It says, building permits, specifically. Let me pull that up one more time. If applicable, it is not required for planning commission's site plan review, but shall be required prior to the issuance of a building permit.
So, so, let me tell you back where I think you just, what I just learned from you. The DOH probably doesn't care about pedestrian safety, traffic calming, anything around a school zone here.
I wouldn't summarize it as that, no, I wouldn't, but-
Well, let me say it differently. We don't expect a report from the DOH with regard to pedestrian safety or school zone safety here.
Correct.
So how do we get one? I have no idea.
I, that's, I, I don't know if we can. I mean, I, I, I don't know what, that's what I was going to ask, was what would be the, the punch list? Other than having agreements in place, right?
So, I, here's, here's what I'd like, my, my big concern is this. The pedestrians, but more, I think what's gonna create the pedestrians is this. The staff is going to get to the school before the students get there. That's a given. If that happens, and if there's no off-site parking, every parking space in that lot is going to be filled with a car. If every parking space is filled with a car, there is no room for anyone to pull in, drop off, and turn around, and pull out with other cars pulling in. So what you're gonna have is people dropping off, stopping in South High Street, dropping off, stopping in the Funeral Home parking lot and dropping off for the kids to run across the street, stopping here, there, everywhere, Prairie Street, for the kids to, to jump out. So, if we have, if I see- If I see that off-site parking for the staff is available, then that opens up that lot for this proposed circuit that we're doing.
So you wanna see a revised plan?
I wanna see the, I wanna see the off-site parking, and I wanna see that the staff is gonna be the off-site parking when the drop, pickup and drop-off is, because that's then what's going to make this able to happen, like they say it's gonna happen.
Right, if I may ask a question though. If, if the park, there was no off-street parking?
Off-site.
Off-site, sorry. Off-site, sorry. And there was a way to flow back into this space, would you also want to, would that be a consideration?
So-
I'm interested in the length of the agreements. If they come to us with a one-year agreement and it's not renewed, what, what do we do come 2025?
Nothing, nothing can do. Because i- if you, see where the, all the red is. Even, even if you, if the traffic flow goes back behind where the Board of Education retains property behind Alpha Omni, sorry, I had to do that. Sorry, Jeff.
The neighboring engineering-
You're, you're still going to have trouble with pickup and drop-off because there's not gonna be room to turn around, get people out the same entrance because of the, the cars sticking out. That's, that's one. Certainly if the proposed parking spaces behind the building and beside the building are filled, because that's what supposedly makes up the parking requirements, you're not even getting a car in there, let alone getting it turned around. It's gonna be difficult. So, I, what I need to see is all the staff parking's going to be somewhere else.
In order for the drop-off to occur?
In order for the drop-off to be able to occur. It can't, it can't, it just physically cannot happen.
Like, with this, with the red squiggles, if they're parked here and parked there, you're not getting an in and out at the same time for that lovely line to come this way.
And if you're, if, if you turn around, it's here and there's cars parked there, you're not getting turned around either. We're, we're, no, we're, we're, we're past that. We're in discussion.
So, in, along those lines, one thing to consider, if, if you look at page 47 versus 48-
Pardon me, I'm sorry, what was that?
Forty-seven versus forty-eight. The parking line goes over the property line on 47. Now, I get it, the architectural firm might allow that to happen, but my question is, when they talk to their insurers, are they gonna allow it to happen?
Right.
And so, I think they need to kind of consider that, you know, as a long-term issue. Once an insurer finds out, hey, you're allowing this, this parking line for a great school to come into your parking lot and geez, something, oh my gosh, could happen, what are you gonna, you know? A, an insurer's not gonna be happy about that. And, and so I think they just need to be clear. Maybe they need to move the line somehow, but again, we need some kind of a accurate drawing saying, this is the radius they need, just like a fire truck would need or whatever. It's not a fire truck, it's SUVs or cars. Here's what they need, they're gonna stay in the property line, then we can rationalize that it's an appropriate plan. Because again, we're not trying to dictate things that are going on in this parking lot. We're worried about things that are gonna be sitting on, on, on High Street backing everything up. And, and the safety issue, I get it in the morning, you can stagger things, but my kids went to MHS, they did after-school work, there's a lot of teenage drivers around there in, in middle afternoon.
Ain't that true?
And that's one of the safety issues we need to worry about with young kids walking across streets and things with teenage drivers around in, in the afternoon. We just may need to make sure that all the safety precautions are in place to, to make this work. And, as I said, I'm still agreeing with this.
And, and that's why I say just plugging this into an algorithm doesn't work in this case. I mean, we've got to live, have real-life experience here of what actually happens around this neighborhood. I mean, we're responsible for it.
Yeah, and we, we've all talked positively about this. We want it to happen, but we can't keep it on our own conscience. College students have died on streets in Morgantown getting hit by cars. Certainly a kid in, in elementary school could happen, and we need to do everything we can to prevent that from happening, you know, that we can, it's reasonable.
There's a great, there's a great example, Bill. You know, the algorithm said Patterson Drive was safe until somebody got killed, and then it wasn't safe anymore.
So, so as far as punch lists, I, I want to see those parking grounds.
And, and a revised circulation plan?
Yeah, you want to peel back the circulation?
Yeah. Now, just to clarify, cause I'm writing this down, park agreements with the neighboring property owners, and then off-street parking for staff and revised circulation plan for the site.
Off-site, off-site.
Off-site, I'm sorry, off-site. Is, but is that a requirement? Is that what, or if the circulation plan could be provided, that would allow some parking? And there was some agreement in way that the applicant could show, hey, we can make that loop, we can make something work. You're amenable to that?
Right.
Okay.
I, I want to see it work.
Right, so I guess the question is, as long as the circulation, they need to come up with a circulation plan that would work? Whether it's-
And if you look at page 45, you could see that you might be able to get cars parked there on the one side and still have an in and out. I mean, it's, it's possible, I think, but we need to, an engineer, someone to just tell us that, that, that distance is safe to be able to do what they want to do.
Who, who decides whether this is a 15 mile an hour school zone? Who decides whether we need flashing warning lights and the state, and when does that happen?
Is that part of the permit? Do they, when are you getting the DOH permit? Do they know this is gonna be a school and have to evaluate it for that? Yes, the use of, yes, they have to know what the use is. And again, I don't want to, the DOH is gonna look at it. They have concerns, they've communicated to our, our, our team, but they are, they're, they're gonna try to work with the applicant.
So, can we ask you then to ask your guys to communicate back to District 4 our concerns about this, particularly with regard to pedestrian safety and the, and the school zone? Traffic calming in the school zone?
Is there anything else anyone wants to see? I understand your concerns about the interior of the building, but we do about that.
Well, that's, that's not for us. I just bring it up for information only, so.
Chair, ready for a motion?
If we are done discussing, I am ready for a motion.
I move we table the application and put it on the next available agenda. And I, I would add that if the applicant and staff has the punch list completed, that free to propose to the president that we have a meeting before our next scheduled monthly meeting, and we'll do the best we can to move this as fast as we can.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion of second, all in favor of tabling? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is MNS 23-08 Metro Towers LLC, Dilly Street and Instant Avenue.
We're still in session, please.
So if you can- Can you all have your discussion outside, cause we're still working here? Go ahead, I called it.
Thank you. So again, this is the proposed subdivision of property highlighted on the screen and in your packet. The applicant seeks to subdivide and convey a portion of City Tax Map 15 parcels 94, 95, 96, and 97 south of, of an existing asphalt driveway known as Creston Avenue at the end of, or the terminus of Dilly Street. If you look here, the yellow area, these are the parcels in question. The yellow area here is the area to be subdivided and conveyed to the two adjacent parcels, 93.1 and I believe 93.3, looking at the map. And then the residual would be left over and the sec, the next case subsequent to this is, uh, would be consolidating these adjoining pieces of property. Um, here you can, can see the zoning map and where Creston Avenue comes down through here, and this lower portion would be again conveyed to another property owner, the residual would stay, and there's an application to consolidate this with the adjacent property owner as well. You just look at the pro, uh, there's the survey plan. Again, this is the property in question. This is what the proposed consolidation would be, eliminating any, uh, at least non-conforming uses of our lots to be too small for the zone that they're located in. And I will conclude there.
Okay. See applicant here?
The applicant is here.
Mr. Schuman's here.
Yeah.
Hey, Robert. Distinguished member of the bar with us tonight, Mr. Robert Schuman.
Mr. DeMasters.
Come on up, Robert. Talk to me.
I don't know, this is a tough damn crowd after watching the last two hours.
We're all tucked out.
You ready to join, you ready to join us? We've got a seat vacant.
Buddy, there's a reason I live on 700 acres where there is no such concept as zoning.
We, we miss your brother.
Yeah, right. Did you, were you drinking before you came to sit here?
Anything you want to add?
No, really.
Just out of curiosity, who owns 93.1 and, if you know?
It's, um, let me see.
Well, which, which one are we talking about? Over here?
Yeah, who owns it?
It's, uh-
Who, who do you think owns it?
I don't know, but I want you to say it.
Mr. Beaufort.
Okay, thank you. I had to make you say it.
I've already texted him telling him how much this is costing him for me to sit here two hours.
Well, you know, good, he can afford it.
Yeah, they're gonna add this, they don't actually have a plan for this right now, but this settles some things between him and Mike Duff, and it's a good resolution.
Okay, that's, that's-
It really is.
And I figure he's got something planned for it, but that's not our concern right now.
Eventually.
Yeah, that's not our concern, that's not something we look at here. We just give him a hard time when he does come for it.
You notice I didn't let him come?
Yeah.
He doesn't like to come.
Actually, I think he quite enjoys it. I just told him I wanted to win tonight and go and get on up the mountain, so he couldn't come.
Okay. Okay, nothing else to add?
No, I, I mean, this, i- it's, it's very simple subdivision, and the next, the next application coming behind me is gonna be Mike Ludlow's to consolidate the pieces above the driveway.
Okay. Are you doing that one too?
No, no.
Okay.
But they're, they're in tandem.
Okay. Good enough, any questions?
Good to see you, Robert. You too, you too.
Haven't seen you in a while.
Been busy skiing. Actually, I wanted to be on the road to head up to the other house and go start skiing tomorrow morning about an hour and a half ago. I didn't really think I'd be leaving here in town. Get you out of class tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition?
Daniel, how are you doing?
Anyone in opposition? Okay, staff recommendations, please.
Staff recommends that the minor subdivision can be approved, subject to conditions in report, and staff also further, additionally noted to fully utilize the new parcel grant created for the minor subdivision and consolidation, that a zoning petition be submitted in the future to rectify the split zoning that would be happening.
Okay.
Move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor? Okay, go skiing. You're done.
Thank you, I'm gonna watch Mike's second half.
Okay, you gonna see if we give him a hard time?
He, he works for Jackson Kelly, he beat, beat him.
Oh, I will do.
He deserves a bad time.
Okay, next item on the agenda, MNS 23-09 Michael Duff and Barbara Ludlow, 362 Creston Avenue.
Again, same case, the residual portion for the subdivision that was just approved is shown here in pink. This is the zoning district. This is the parcel that's being now subdivided and consolidated. This is the parcel residual, and this is, the green outline is the proposed consolidation.
Okay. Any questions for the planner?
But this one involves two different zoning districts.
Yes, this one does. Yes.
Will that be corrected in the future?
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is OI R3. So the, again, staff's recommendation would be that this be rezoned in the future.
Okay. You got anything?
Andrew Bell from Law Firm of Jackson Kelly, we represent Michael Duff and Barbara Ludlow. They own the various parcels that we're requesting for consolidation. As Mr. Schuman indicated, it's kind of a, little bit of a chicken and the egg kind of situation because of the southern, the, the portion to the south of the existing driveway. Mr. Yeager informed us that those additional, those additional tax maps-
Tax map parcels up here-
Would fail to meet the, the acreage requirement, the lot size requirement. So, because Mr. Duff and Ms. Ludlow own this additional, the proposition was made to simply consolidate them so that it meets the, you know, you'd have one big lot, and then you'd have the, the home there on the, on the property. So, they acquired these properties, as I understand it, just in piecemeal over the course of many decades from various family members, things like that. So, it's just a little easier to consolidate them.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, any member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition? Trying to get up to talk, or are you just raising your hand?
I'm, I'm just moving in favor.
Okay. Any member of the audience who'd like to speak in opposition? Okay, staff recommendations, please.
Staff recommends approval, subject to conditions in the staff report, and again, to fully utilize the new parcel. Staff recommends that the owner petition the planning commission in the future to rezone the property to one zoning district.
Okay, any discussion?
I would like to see a condition that considers something like, with the condition that it be rezoned, that portion be rezoned within the next six months or something, because it is not right to try to combine a lot with two separate districts. These are always things you try to undo, not us create.
Staff supports that recommendation.
You guys, are you okay with that?
Yes, we can, we'll, we'll go through that process, we'll talk to Ricky and, and work through that process.
Thank you. Move to approve with added condition?
Motion to have a second?
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Who seconded, I'm sorry?
Me.
Okay.
There's a video, you can-
Thank you. I thank the commissioner.
Other business. Okay.
That's the orange folder.
Daniel, what is the, uh, company that's making city council bend over backwards to this alcohol regulation?
We have no microphone.
Okay. We're on other business. We need to hand Danny up.
No, we still have-
Oh, my gosh. Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. What's going on?
Let's go home.
No, no. Nope, not yet. Sorry about that, okay. Ready to move on?
I'm ready.
Other business, all right. So this is discussion under action on proposed ordinance suspending the enforcement of subsection E and J of subsection 13106, 27 of the city's code regarding supplemental regulations applicable to restaurant private club uses. Essentially, pending a city council is an ordinance to suspend enforcement because of a variety of different issues and concerns, and so the city council is requesting the planning commission to weigh in on that, even though this is not a tax amendment or a zoning map amendment. We're also requesting a brief public hearing to allow any comment to speak on this particular issue.
Yeah.
And to provide comment back before the second reading at the city council meeting. Looking at the staff report, you can see here, staff's recommending approval, and or not recommending approval, but saying at least the ordinance and its, and its intentions, and what it's going to do is in keeping with the city's 2020-
Where's your staff report card?
Oh, sorry, it's in the orange folder?
No, that's just the ordinance.
No, there's a staff report.
Oh, staff recommendation.
Yes, sorry about that.
Oh, oh, okay.
Sorry, continue.
Sorry, the proposed ordinance is in keeping with the city's 2020 comprehensive plan. Please note the following land management, economic development strategies and actions that support that recommendation, with the goal being and the direction being of staff and the planning commission to look at the sub, look at the regulations regarding the restaurant private club use, and as you will see in the study session, that's one of our items of discussion to, to get that process started. Okay.
Mr. President, I propose the commission endorse the proposed ordinance suspending[1758.07] Mr. President, I propose the commission endorse the proposed ordinance suspending enforcement of subsection yada yada as, per the staff recommendation.
I, I'm going to go on the record as saying, I don't really know what business it is of the planning commission to weigh in on the enforcement of ordinances. To me, that's a city council job, and if city council wants to amend the ordinance and/or rescind the ordinance, I think then, then they can come to us and ask about what should a proposed new ordinance, zoning ordinance in front of us. But as far as an ordinance that exists and they're asking us to weigh in, should we follow it or not? I really don't think that's our position to do that. I'm just going on the record to say that.
I missed that meeting. Don't look at me. That was the first city council meeting I ever missed.
Oh, see what happens when you miss?
Don't look at me on this one.
But that's, that's my opinion on it. If that's, if they want us to do it, I don't think, I think we can say, yeah, sure, go ahead, but I don't think we have any authority to do that.
Yes, technically, it's not a tax amendment that's being proposed. That's right.
Correct. It's nothing. It's nothing.
Were they just hoping this is a public forum?
They have a public forum. They have public comments.
They want some cover from us.
But when a restaurant, when a restaurant is looking to come in, they own, they look at the zoning and the city, in the city code, right?
Correct.
So that, that's why we would come in, because an applicant is looking at, at that. So I, I get it.
Sure, and that's the zoning that's in place. And if they want to say, if city council wants to say, we're going to rescind that ordinance or that portion of the ordinance, they are free to do so. If they come to us and say, we want you to propose to us a new ordinance, they're free to do so.
That's probably coming.
But I don't think they can come to us and say, hey, bless us in not enforcing this ordinance, because that's not our role. That's not what we do.
Just for public record, can you give a brief?
Just saying.
What are section E and J? One is the, one is the sixty forty.
Yeah, and the other is quarterly.
Quarterly reporting.
Correct.
They, they, I mean, they can do this all they want. They, they don't need us. I'm just, that's my opinion, but if.
It was requested.
It was requested, why? That's why I, what I want to understand. Are they trying to make a deal and they need us to weigh in now? Or, or are they looking for us to give them substantive advice? I can't believe that would be the case. I mean, I'm not being cynical, it's just they'll, they'll make up their own minds. Why, why? I just want to know why.
It's already been voted on once, correct?
Yeah.
The second reading will be next week.
Be done. You don't need us. Table.
I can't make motions otherwise.
Yeah.
I want to help out. I just don't know. I agree with Pete. I don't know that we can. And secondly, if there was a reason, if I understood how us acting helps, helps a deal.
I mean, I don't see anybody ever coming back on us, but I think we're exceeding our authority. And that leaves us in a pickle.
So we don't even have to table. We can just take no action?
Right, but the state code asks for, when they're obviously for consent and advice from the planning commission. And even though this isn't technically, as you put it, a, a tax amendment, it's still an alteration temporarily to the zoning ordinance.
I don't think they can temporarily change the zoning ordinance. I think they have to adopt an ordinance.
Of the enforcement of the zoning ordinance.
They can't do it. They can't do it. They can rescind an ordinance, they can adopt an ordinance.
And rescinding an ordinance is enacting an ordinance, the rescinding ordinance. So you've got to have the notice, the public hearing, and.
Maybe that's the message you need to send.
Yeah.
I mean, it just feels like a sword arm deal to me. I don't, you know.
I, 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 I think that, I think we would be exceeding our authority, and I think that although I don't think there's any potential applicant that was denied something in the recent past that would have been affected by this, that would then come after the planning commission and/or the city.
There was.
Want to say that again?
Whoa, okay.
There's a timeout. Yeah.
The, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved an alcohol license for Apothecary Ale House, and the ABCA came in and said, your kitchen is not adequate to say that you are giving, that you are meeting, that you are capable of meeting the sixty forty that the city has in place. So they would not grant that. She was not allowed to.
Was it because of the sixty forty rule, or is it just because of the equipment that they would have in their kitchen? Because I think that's, that was the, that's the bigger concern.
It was my understanding that they told her, like, the size and equipment in her kitchen would not support the, the ability to generate sixty percent.
So, let me ask you, is this about the apothecary, or is this about something different?
Hmm?
It's not about the, no. But, I mean.
I'm just saying that that's an example of where the sixty forty denied an application for.
From, from the ABCA, not from the city.
Right. The BZA said, go for it, and the, the ABCA said, not so fast.
This is clearly the city attorney's line. Obviously, he's made an opinion about suspending enforcement issues, but I'm, I'm as confounded as Pete is on this one.
I, I think that the.
City council should live with the city attorney's advice, and we wash our hands.
Could we just respond back and say, we look forward to reviewing the changes you submit?
We will work on them. That's what our study, yes. We will work on them. If that's what you want to do.
City council's going to know what we're doing here, because.
Run tape.
Yeah, Danielle's sitting in the middle of us, so.
They're going to look at me on Tuesday and say, what did the planning commission say about this?
But, but if they would share with us a reason, just that, that we need to stretch and, and help out in some way, I'd be willing to at least think about it, but.
But we don't have anything other than, hey, here's what we want to do, cover us.
Yeah.
And so in the ordinance, it says, city council requests that the Morgantown planning commission begin the process to bring these legislative changes to the city council in January. So, yes, we're going to do that. Is that what your response is that?
Yeah.
Is that the correspondence?
We, we are going to.
Good job.
We are having a study session where we're talking about this right after this planning commission meeting, correct?
Yes.
That's, there's, there's what we're doing.
There you go.
Okay.
Two-sentence, two-sentence memo. I'll get it to you.
City council, thank you for the information.
Understood.
Sorry, Daniel, you're on the hoxie.
I didn't do it.
Well, you'll be on the hoxie on Tuesday.
That's fine. I'm used to it.
Let's go, let's go.
All right.
So.
So that was, that's, don't need a motion or anything for that. That's the response, everybody's, okay?
Yep.
All right.
Committee reports.
No reports?
Staff reports.
Hang in there, we're almost done.
Did you get another employee yet?
Not yet. We're doing reorganization in the office, so that's why it's been delayed.
Sometime soon, I hope.
Me too.
Those people pitching a, a bitch about their timeline. I mean, I responded how I feel, that's not our problem, but I mean, was this, was the application for the charter school delayed in some fashion, or has it been processed?
It was delayed a month because of a legal notice requirement not being properly.
But that's not, I think the question was, did they have, if they had their application in, in that form prior to December, and.
Yes, there was a delay in reviewing it, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But you had the technical review, yes?
Yes, December fifth.
Okay. And you gave them the concerns at that time?
Yes, sir.
And what did they do?
Wait until yesterday.
Wait until last night?
Well, some of the concerns that the staff had to reach out to DOH and get some guidance on the traffic impact study and those type of things, and we didn't get that back until right before the holidays. So once, yeah. But we will, staff will move as fast as we can.
Oh, and I'm not, I'm not saying anything about staff. What I'm saying is.
No, no, I mean, we'll work with them as best as.
I'm saying about staff, he needs another employee.
Yes.
Again, we're looking at, yeah.
No, it has nothing to do with council.
No, no, no.
It's rewriting job descriptions and trying to balance all those timelines.
Oh, so it's on you? Oh, okay. Oh, I thought I was helping. I'm just torturing her.
He fell on the sword for y'all. Okay.
Stop this.
Anything, anything for the good of the commission?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. I guess we can turn the camera off?
Yes.